The March third meeting of the Planning Commission for Sierra Madre, we'll start with roll call.
Chair Pebsner.
Here.
Vice Chair Dennison.
Here.
Commissioners Dallas.
Here.
Hut.
Here.
And Spears.
Present.
Thank you. We'll go on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion when you approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Great, we have a second and do we need a video vote here? Do we need a roll, roll call vote, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, go ahead, Chair Pebsner.
Yes, aye.
Vice Chair Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Hut?
Here.
Commissioner Dallas?
Here.
And Commissioner Spears.
Present, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, all right, thank you, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of last meeting, February third, I believe. Anybody have any changes, edits, deletions?
I move.
I didn't have any changes.
I move we approve as submitted.
Second.
Very good, second, roll call vote, let's take it.
Chair Pebsner?
Yes, aye, yes.
Vice Chair Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hut?
Yes.
And Commissioner Spears?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, so next is our report from City Council Liaison, I don't have all the tiles up here. Mr. Kelly here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi there, nothing to report, just wanted to thank everybody for attending and participating in Tuesday's joint meeting, I thought it went really well and I was happy and glad to hear all of your questions, I thought they were really added value to the conversation and I appreciate all of the preparation that I'm sure went into it, because I did it too. And, you know, I think, you know, I think it went a long way to help the public get their information out and I think understand that, you know, we're hearing their concerns, so thanks for everybody's participation.
Thank you. Very, now this will move on to the community input section, this is a time when anybody can speak on an issue that's not on current, current agenda. You, let's see, how many minutes am I giving everybody today? I guess I'll give them, I don't see it, but I'll give them four minutes, how about, how about that? So you can, anybody standing in the wings or to speak on anything that's not on the current agenda? Ask IT, anybody waiting, or should we give them a couple of minutes?
Commissioner Pebsner, we did not have anybody currently raising their hands, we have a total of four participants. And right now, it does not appear as anyone wishes to make public comment, although we should probably give them maybe a minute or so to make sure.
Give them, how about a minute thirty, how's that sound?
Sounds good.
Great, thank you. I gotta, one second. Anybody have any changes, edits, deletions?
I move.
I didn't have any changes.
I move we approve as submitted.
Second.
Very good, second, roll call vote, let's take it.
Chair Pebsner?
Yes, aye, yes.
Vice Chair Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hut?
Yes.
And Commissioner Spears?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, so next is our report from City Council Liaison, I don't have all the tiles up here. Mr. Kelly here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi there, nothing to report, just wanted to thank everybody for attending and participating in Tuesday's joint meeting, I thought it went really well and I was happy and glad to hear all of your questions, I thought they were really added value to the conversation and I appreciate all of the preparation that I'm sure went into it, because I did it too. And, you know, I think, you know, I think it went a long way to help the public get their information out and I think understand that, you know, we're hearing their concerns, so thanks for everybody's participation.
Thank you. Very, now this will move on to the community input section, this is a time when anybody can speak on an issue that's not on current, current agenda. You, let's see, how many minutes am I giving everybody today? I guess I'll give them, I don't see it, but I'll give them four minutes, how about, how about that? So you can, anybody standing in the wings or to speak on anything that's not on the current agenda? Ask IT, anybody waiting, or should we give them a couple of minutes?
Commissioner Pebsner, we did not have anybody currently raising their hands, we have a total of four participants. And right now, it does not appear as anyone wishes to make public comment, although we should probably give them maybe a minute or so to make sure.
Give them, how about a minute thirty, how's that sound?
Sounds good.
Great, thank you. I gotta, one second. Anybody yet, or no?
No one yet, sir, it does not appear that anyone wishes to make public comment.
Okay, that sounds good, we'll slowly move on, if something happens in the next thirty seconds, let me know, otherwise we'll move on to the first item on our agenda, the number one consideration of Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two oh five. This was ongoing, I believe, from the last meeting, or February, and is there a brief presentation or an update?
We do have a presentation, this is continued discussion, continued public hearing from the last February meeting, seventeenth, and Claire Lynn will open up the proceedings and we also have Phil Burns from the Arroyo, Arroyo Group.
Thank you.
Claire?
Good, Claire.
Good evening Chair and Planning Commissioners, the hearing this evening is to amend the municipal co-text amendment for chapter seventeen point two nine, multiple family residential high density zone, and adding a new chapter seventeen point three nine for religious housing overlay zone. These two zones were introduced as a part of the adopted six cycle housing element in November twenty twenty-one. The City Council directed staff and the Planning Commission to prepare the ordinances and update the zoning map. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the Planning Commission Resolution recommending the City Council to adopt ordinances amending chapter seventeen point two nine for multiple family residential high density and adding chapter seventeen point three nine for religious housing overlay of Title seventeen of the municipal code in compliance with the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element update and update the zoning map accordingly. Now I will turn over to Mr. Phil Burns, the Principal of the Arroyo Group, for the PowerPoint presentation.
Good, Claire, thank you Chair Pebsner, Commissioners, I'm gonna give you a very, very brief, very brief PowerPoint this evening, because we have already indeed talked about both of these zoning code sections on multiple occasions here, but I do want to just bring up for all of you the changes that were made since the last Planning Commission meeting, based on feedback received from the various Commissioners. And these are reflected in the, the version of the code amendment that you have before you. So in the religious housing overlay, first, we saw that you had acted during the last meeting on the city's SB nine eighty-eight oh three ordinance and created a preliminary design review process. Our original language for preliminary design review was different, and so that has now been changed to our language rather, you know, has been changed to align with your adopted language. We also restored the original height limitation language, so if you recall, there was a little bit back and forth between in the interior of religious housing overlay sites, would we allow a three-story development? Or would we only allow it if it was two stories over a parking? Really, you know, I, I have always been of the opinion that, you know, there's, there's no benefit really to having above-grade parking, sometimes it has to happen, but there's, there's not a really benefit to me of the character in any way, shape, form of having it, so and as you'll see after this, we made some adjustments to the three-story height, you know, how we're allowing three stories for R three, sorry, R three twenty and R three thirty zones. In keeping with that, then switched the language for religious housing overlay back to allowing three-story on the interior site, not only two stories plus above-grade. Okay, in the R three twenty, R three thirty, it's, did the same adjustment to the preliminary design review language. We retained the proposed third-story standards from our presentation of the last meeting, if you recall, there were there was an overall limitation on how much of a site could be developed with a third story, there was a maximum dimension so that the third-story elements are more like individual, you know, kind of elements or towers, rather than a full three-story building. And then it required setback from the street. And discussing with Commissioners, there, I think there was a desire, that, the, the feeling was that those things made sense, and we should apply those to all properties within the R three twenty and R three thirty zones. Previously, that was allowed only for properties that were at least a hundred feet wide. So those have been applied to all sites, and then the height limit has been decreased and changed in the form that we are measuring. So originally that was written as thirty-five foot height limit measured from the lowest point on the property or the lowest point close to the building footprint up to the tallest portion of the building, and now the language has been changed to make it only thirty feet high, but measure it in the same way that height is measured for the R one zone, which is basically going with the slope. I think in general, that's a, a much better way to, to actually control height and deal with the various topography that there, there is. And then finally, required an uncovered pedestrian entry into the project leading into some kind of interior open space. Establish that as a design standard that would be required for one of those entries every one hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, previously we had written one hundred and fifty. So a little tweaks around there, those are the adjustments that we've made from the previous version that you've seen. I will end the presentation there, but know that we have all of our previous slides from our previous presentations about both of these zoning code amendments available and certainly available for your questions, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. What was I gonna say? Oh, does anyone have any questions about the presentation for Mr. Burns?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, with regard to the, the pedestrian entrance, I, I'm fine with the distance, but what is the, the meaning, or what are we trying to get at by uncovered entrance? I'm not sure what, what we mean by that.
Yeah, the, it would mean that there, that, you know, that there's, it's, it's open to the sky. So the building would not connect above the, above that entry, and that is to again, really kind of keep the village scale, the house scale, you know, maybe a little bit more than the house scale to buildings.
Okay, so it's not just a front door, it's, it's actually a gap in the, in the buildings, okay? I, I, I'm good with that concept, I think maybe we could tweak that language a little bit to make that a little more clear, because I wasn't exactly sure what we're trying to get at there.
Thanks. Go ahead, John.
No, I'm not saying I, I, I have a, an answer to how to do that either, and I don't, I think that's not super important, and I would be fine just conveying that concept, you know, and then staff could, can fix that on the way up to City Council.
Okay.
Certainly.
Great. Any other questions or concerns or? Okay, then I guess we'll open it up for public comment. Give everybody a couple of minutes, maybe two minutes to chime in. And we can open it back up for discussion and consideration. Do we have a timer of some sort?
Commissioner, just as an informational, we have four participants.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Right now we have no one wishing to make public comments, although they are attending the meeting, no one has raised their hands for public comment. Reminder to anybody who does wish to make public comment, please use the raise hand function as denoted on the slide. Maybe we give them a minute or so to raise their hands.
Yeah, let's give them a minute to, I'll time it out here. Okay, looks like we're giving everybody a minute, anybody else calls in, we can always use some latitude, I guess I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any further comment or discussion on this, anybody wanna say anything further?
Mike can start us off, I, I, I think this is you know, the best we can make of what the state is giving us, I think the way that we're doing the height measurement is gonna be more in keeping with the character of town, and so I think that's good. Yeah, I think the concept of the pedestrian opening that we talked about is good, I just think we need to clean up the language a little bit. So I, I totally can approve this with that one minor tweak, and recommend it to the City Council.
Great, okay.
I agree with, with John. You know, the, the religious overlay, we haven't seen a lot of interest from the religious community to take advantage of this, so I'm not sure whether it's something that we're going to see in the near future, but at least we have it in place and we're abiding by state law. And all the other parts have now been seen by us and by the City Council and back and forth a couple of times, so I think we've looked at this from every different, different angle and I think it's, I can approve it and it's ready to go on.
Right. Peggy? You're on mute.
Peggy, you're on mute. Sorry.
I think the rewriting of the code seems fine, I think we'd need to try it and see how it works at this point. I think it's a good shot, what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Tom, any last comments or nothing? Okay.
I think it hasn't been stated.
Good, someone wanna make a motion? Well, yeah, I'm not gonna make, yeah, let's make a motion, I'm, I'm good with this. I always, listen, after our last meeting, I always think about unintended consequences of language that we use, because we see numerous things taken out of context and sometimes, you know, we have to go back and rethink what we're doing, but as long as we can this is a new development, if we have, we're gonna have to probably make adjustments to this as state law changes anyway, so I think this could adjust, City Council could adjust at this juncture of time, so, I'll entertain a motion?
I move that we approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two dash zero five recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance amending Title seventeen zoning chapter seventeen dot two nine and Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two dash zero six recommending the addition of a new chapter seventeen dot thirty-nine of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code.
Second?
Well, second, with a friendly amendment with, with the noted changes.
Accepted.
Okay. Roll call vote, I assume? Jen?
Pebsner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Chair Hut?
Yes.
Commissioner Spears?
Yes.
I'm asleep.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to a number, item two on our, our hearing action items, a consideration of Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two oh two approval of the municipal co-text amendments in response to state law, including small house lot developments, urban lot splits and ministerial re, design review. Do we have another short, brief update?
We have an update from our city attorney, Alex Gueragosian.
Thank you Director Gonzalez, I'll be sharing my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Not on full screen though.
You, you can't see it on, is it on full screen now?
It is not.
So odd.
But we can still see it.
All right, very good. So the, the Planning Commission at the last meeting had recommended some amendments. The Planning Commission's amendments included extending the R one standard for urban lot splits, deleting the flag lot standards for urban lot splits, and staff had a few other amendments as well. And staff's amendments were adding a standard for developments adjacent to solar panels, because this issue came up from one of the applicants that wanted to apply for an SB nine permit, I believe. And we wanted to add clarifying language that the underlying design and development standards for each zone apply when applying SB nine. Those are the only changes, I don't know if the members of the Commission would like, I can go through the entire presentation again. But those are the only changes, they're relatively minor, and they should be reflected in the, in the ordinance itself. So if you scroll down, I believe they're in, in my version, they're in red, I believe they should be in red as well in your version. And that concludes my report, and again, if the Commission would like, I'd be happy to go through the entire presentation.
Good, Peggy?
I have a question about the adjacent to solar panels thing, what is that about?
If, if Planner Wolf is on the call, Planner Wolf can talk about that directly, because he, he sees this issue.
I'm sure, I can try to explain, the concern kind of arises when we're considering an SB nine type of development where it's possibly a two-story structure at a four-foot setback adjacent to a property, and this would be in concern where that building is constructed and the property to the north of it has a one-story structure also close to its property line and subsequently close to that new building that has solar panels on it, so if those solar panels are shaded throughout the day by that new construction, that can cause, you know, inadequacy of that and obsolescence of that solar panel system. So we wanted to put in place a protection to keep in mind that the solar panels should stay functional.
Okay. I, I will note that we did receive a comment from Commissioner Hut before this meeting, and the comment requested the removal of section seventeen point five eight point oh two oh eight four which references, which basically says that small home development will be permitted in the R three thirty. He recommended striking that, I agree with that recommendation, because developments that involve thirty units or more can't take advantage of the small home lot development under, under state law. So it makes sense to remove that line, so thank you Commissioner Hut for catching that. Commissioner Hut had, had another question, I don't want to misstate it, Commissioner Hut, maybe you can ask directly.
Yeah, and, and when I say this, I, I sent you the wrong reference, it's on seventeen fifty eight oh five oh F three, which is on page forty of the staff packet, and that's what the floor area standards, and we have a minimum floor area permitted for each dwelling of eight hundred square feet. And, you know, a few years ago, when we revised our floor area ratios and whatnot, we made a big point of not having any minimum, and so I don't know, if we're trying to encourage affordable housing and we wanna, and we're being forced to wedge many units on, why we wanna have a minimum, so I, I would be in favor of taking that minimum out.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely remove the minimum, I think the, the purpose of that, that language actually came from it was borrowed language from the SB nine ordinance, and the, the concept there was this, if someone's gonna take advantage of the SB nine ordinance, we figured they would build a home something between eight hundred square feet and seventeen fifty. If they wanted to build something smaller, they could take advantage of the ADU ordinance. If they wanted to build something smaller, they could take advantage of the ADU ordinance, because the ADU ordinance allows for smaller development. But I see your point as to the small home lot developments, which are gonna be multiple units next to each other. If the commission would like, we can strike that provision so we can have smaller homes if they're gonna be multiple smaller homes next to each other. But just as a note, that same line, I believe that same limitation, inner square feet, exists under the SB9 ordinance, which is 1759.050. I don't know if that, you wanna strike that language as well from there.
Why don't we wait for the discussion, Alex, because I'm gonna open that stuff just for more questions and then we'll kind of procedurally, just if anybody has any, you know, burning parts about this, we can rehash this in a sec. Anybody have any more questions? Great, okay. So then I'll just, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. We'll give people at hand, if anybody interested, raise their hand up, if they're actively participating, that will give them a few minutes to to call in.
Commissioner, we have four participants in the meeting, and at this time, no one has raised their hand, but as you said, you give them a minute or so.
Yeah, very good. Wait a minute.
Commissioner, no one raised their hands for public comment at this time.
Terrific. We'll open it back up for a discussion from the council, from the commission. Anybody have any, or wanna start off the discussion or further talk about what John's talking about or bring up something new? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I did wanna understand what Commissioner Hut was bringing up, because I don't fully understand the idea of not having a minimum floor area for these dwelling units. So help, if you wouldn't mind explaining the logic of that?
I mean, I think the logic is pretty simple. It's smaller is better, so why do we wanna encourage bigger? We, in our regular R1 code, we don't have any minimum. We got rid of that a few years ago because we wanted to let people build, you know, tiny houses or whatever kind of thing they want. I think there's certain things under the building code for occupancy and fire rules that are gonna make it so you couldn't make it, you know, ridiculously small. But I don't think from a zoning perspective, we wanna require anyone to make anything bigger than it has to be. And so I would, I, to the city attorney's point, I guess that comes up in two places. I didn't see it. I missed it on the other, but I would delete it in both places.
So, so the point is that if they have the space available and it, but it's not enough for an 800-square-foot dwelling, they can still build? Is that the logic?
Or if they just want a smaller one, you know, maybe they've got enough room to build an 800, but they want a 750. That's fine with me.
Well, I thought that there was a state law minimum relating to the lot split that was 800 square feet. Am I remembering that incorrectly, Mr. City Attorney?
The minimum applies to what we have to allow. We have to allow a minimum of 800 square feet. But, you know, we could allow for something smaller as well. I think it's also important to think of these, to think of these two ordinances a little bit differently. We can, as Commissioner Hut pointed out, the commission can strike the 800 minimum for both, but they do different things. This small home lot development, AB803, contemplates a bunch of homes, a bunch of tiny homes on a single lot. So SB9 also contemplates something between one and four homes on a single lot, or sorry, one or two homes, so it's gonna be a single home or duplex on a single lot. So I think it's also maybe a question of potentially community character. If if the commission feels like they want homes to be a minimum of certain size to match the rest of the community, that might also be a consideration, but if that's not a consideration, there is no reason to have a minimum. As Commissioner Hut pointed out, the building codes do require, I believe, you have to have at least 220 feet, which is the efficiency unit, so it can't be smaller than that. So there are minimum standards under the building code, but there's no reason to impose minimum standards on the planning under our planning ordinance unless, you know, there's some design reason to do so.
On the law that require, or that allows for, as you called it, many tiny homes on a lot, what is the limit as to how many you can put on that?
AB803, I believe the limit is 10.
And is that in an R1, or that's in what zoning?
I'm gonna pull up the slide now so we can look at that together. Give me one second.
So this is if somebody would like to build something that looks like a motor court?
Yeah, it's multi, but it's in multifamily.
Okay, yeah.
So this, this is AB803, that's the small home lot developments. And under AB803, we're looking at something like this. It's going to apply in the multifamily zones. We struck the R330, so it's just gonna be R2, R3, and R320. It won't be in the single-family zones.
And does this override the zone that it's in? So if you're an R2, can you only have two of these tiny homes, or can you have this 10 that you said is contemplated?
It overrides, it overrides the underlying zoning and it doesn't require a zone change.
So if I had an R2 property with AB803, I could put 10 units on it?
With AB803, yeah, yes, you could, you could put multiple units on it. And I'm just gonna scroll down here to the AB803 section. "The development will result in at least as many units as the maximum allowable residential density." That's the actual standard. So if the residential density allows two, you have to build at least a minimum of two, but there could be more. If the residential density allows for, if it's an R320, you have to build at least 20 individual, single-family homes, but you could also build more.
Yeah, so let me just say this back to you, make sure I understand it. If I had an R2 lot that was at least, what's the R2 minimum?
But R2 is two.
No, I'm sorry, the R2, the square footage, because it says that it has to be
Oh, the square footage?
7,500, I think.
7,500. So if I have an R2 that's 7,500 square feet of lot, I can put 10 units on it?
Potentially. You could put a minimum, you have to put a minimum of two units. And you could put more units if you qualify for something like a density bonus or something else. You, but it's not, it's not a minimum of, I'm sorry if I misquote, it's not a minimum of 10 units. It's, you have to just, it says the development will result in at least as many units as the maximum allowable residential density. That's the standard, that's the density standard.
Does it allow you to exceed that number?
Yeah, you can exceed that number, correct. And if you're gonna exceed that number, of course, there are certain limitations on the size of the home, maximum lot size, height, setbacks, parking.
Yeah, but it looks like the state law kind of does away with all of those, right?
Well, it does away with it to the extent that you, it has, the development has to allow a minimum of, has to allow a minimum of two units, basically, in an R2, if you're going to, if you're going to use it, yeah.
So in the example that I used, the minimum square footage for an R2 is 7,500 square feet. I have a 7,500-square-foot lot. I have to have at least two units on it. What is the maximum I can put on there under AB803?
Under AB803, I believe without, without some kind of density bonus, I think we would allow for two.
Okay, is that, if it's, if there's some way to allow more than, I guess I'm trying to understand what exactly this does, except exempt parking and some of the other things, because if the number of units that you're allowed to put on here is granted to be higher because of this, then I think that having a minimum square footage per unit is very, very important, so that people don't come in and take an R2 lot and put 10 units on. That's why I was asked, that's why I was digging so deep into this, because in an R, on an R2 or an R3, if we start allowing in those those exemplar lots to have a large number of units, then putting that minimum square footage in there, and I assume that over time, the state law is going to push down that road. So I'm actually not in favor of reducing a minimum floor area for the small housing portion.
So Tom, what you're really discussing is that someone could take like 10 500-square-foot units or 350 square minimum little cottages, like Bob's talking about with a motor court, and plunking five in a row and five in a row and just putting, making sure the setbacks and everything else figure into the formula.
Yes, and I'm, and it's truly the R2s and R3s of the world that I'm worried about. I'm not worried about the ones that are zoned and expected to be like that, but to suddenly plunk, I mean, there's R2s and R3s up and down Baldwin, and there's a lot of them in town, and so to suddenly have a motor court next to something, a very residential-looking neighborhood, is, I think, not in line with the city, with the way that the city would like to see housing done, and so I just wanna be careful that we don't set ourselves up to allow that.
You know, just to give an example of how these laws can interact, in the, under AB803, so for this small home lot development, let's assume for a second that someone's going to develop in the R2, and they build two small homes. Under the ADU law, because it's a multifamily, they can also build two small detached ADUs in the back. Now you have four units. Assuming some of those are affordable, the density bonus could apply and they could go additional units. So I don't know that they'd get to 10 in the, in the R2, but they could certainly get, you know, four or more.
Then they'd do the lot split and put more on.
Yeah, but the lot, the lot split lot is different than this, so they couldn't, are you saying they'd split the lot and then the two lots would be R2?
I was just stacking as many of the laws as I could for the sake of conversation. So I guess what I am saying, though, is that I am not for the idea of striking a minimum in these small housing in the R1, or R2 and R3 zones.
Yeah, but the, the size of the house doesn't change the density at all. I mean, the way the density works is the same. It's R2, so you can put two, and if you wanna put a second unit, you could put second units. So you can get four, with or without this code, you could get four on an R2.
Depending on the square footage, right? It becomes a square footage challenge at a certain point. The larger minimum initial house you put on there, the less room there is on the lot to start using that. Right?
I, I, I don't see how you're getting, because the thing is, you could always put an ADU on, up to 800 square feet. So even if you bumped up against the floor area rules, you could, you could max out your floor area for your two units, and then you could add two 800-square-foot ADUs under current code. So, I mean, you're gonna get the same amount of units, it's just whether we wanna say that some of them have to be at least 800 square feet. I don't know that. I understand the concept that we wanna make sure no one is weaseling, like where there's a maximum of four, they don't somehow figure out how to get eight or something like that. But I don't see how cutting that minimum does that. I just see it as if for some reason, if somebody has a lot and for some reason they want a 750-square-foot, I mean, this is probably academic, because no one's ever built a 750-square-foot thing, but if they do, I don't care. I'm happier than an 800-square-foot one, so.
I think there's a real market for small places. Young people living on their own, older people living on their own, and they just, a lot of them can't afford the bigger spaces, and so to the degree we can allow more small spaces, that's more units, but it's less square footage if you don't have a minimum. And for instance, in the 30s, during the depression, there, these little bungalow courts were built, and a lot of those are way under, those little houses are way under the 800-square-foot minimum, and they're still charming to this day. I mean, I don't see the point of a minimum. Some people want just a place in town because they live out in the rural country and part of some rural spot, and they come into the metropolitan area, they just need a small space, you know.
Now you're describing Peggy, now you're describing where I live. That's the canyon, Old Ranch Road. No, I, I, I agree. There's also weird lots on Victoria Lane there, I think are R3, that we always had a conundrum about, about, I remember, this was years ago, trying to figure out, what do you do with this small R3 lot that has a residential unit, you know, that has a house on it, that because an initial planning was supposed to be some deeper business district that never happened, now people live there. But wind-sized lots, and they happen to be R3, so, I mean, in some ways an advantage. I can think of one in Victoria Lane that, you know, like John says, it's like you could put a 400 and a 500 square foot, that might be all you can fit on there realistically, but if you give them a minimum, it may take away their opportunity to, you know, for someone to do that. And we already have complaints about, off of, is it, right next to the church, a couple of units that are right on the corner of that, what's that alleyway? I can't remember the name, but someone said, someone said to me, how'd that get built? And I go, we had nothing to do with it. They thought there was, they got some kind of special, not exemption, but had to come before the planning commission to get minimum set, you know, smaller setbacks, but they were, they were passed and built, you know, over the counter, and they're pretty tight.
And I think it's important to note that these are gonna look, homes built under this ordinance, AB803, small home lot developments, will look different than I think homes that go under SB9, or homes probably under the underlying duplex ordinance, because I'm assuming for SB9 and for the, for the R2, you're probably gonna get duplexes, so multifamily structure, two units stacked on top of each other. But under AB803, you're not gonna get that. You're gonna get individual, single-family homes, whether they're two-story or one-story, I don't know, but you're gonna get individual, single-family homes all kind of next to each other, like the bungalow court style that Commissioner Dallas was talking about. So, so these will look different. So these will look different. And that might affect the unit issue as well.
Yeah, I, I think the big difference, I mean, i- if. We talked about before that if somebody wants a smaller thing, they could do an ADU. Or, or they could do this, the, the main difference is to me on that. Concept is the electric and utility hookups. Because for an ADU, those hookups. Are part of the main house. And so the people who rent them don't pay those utilities, they're all the same. Uh, but this, they're separate units, and so those people pay all their own utilities, it's a little bit more independent. And, and the concept is. You know, from, from perspective of how people are living there, it's a little different, because for an ADU, you sort of have a main house. And then the, the, you know, accessory dwelling unit, whereas these are meant to be more. Smaller of the same size. And so. I don't know.
Are they allowed to have a, are they allowed to have a common wall like in a bungalow court?
Uh, I, that's in our, uh, development standards and they can share walls.
Okay, so. So I think what Tom, I hear Tom saying is that you could drive down, you know, a. A street in town and you have. Uh. Larger buildings on a lot and then suddenly go to one where there's a multiple, a bunch of small buildings. Put together on a lot, is that correct, Tom? And so the transition from one to another would be rather abrupt. But I would suggest that if you even go up to Miramonte right now and, you know, on that, on that, uh, north. East corner, you have a bungalow court, and then the next house over is a large house on a lot. And you go, as you go down Miramonte, you have, you know. Huge houses on, on lots, you know, by themselves. So. You know, if I think about that transition, it's not too onerous, because I think that. The Commissioner Dallas has pointed out that it can be done in an aesthetic way, is, you know. Allah the, you know, some kind of motor court, bungalow court, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, and I think of those, I mean, that one, the one that you're describing specifically is at the corner, I think, of Baldwin.
Um. And Miramonte.
And so I, I already think of Baldwin as being one where, a street where I would expect to see those. If you were, if you were going across Miramonte as on your way over to Mount Wilson Trail. I don't know if you've ever made your way over that way. But it would be surprising, I think, to all of a sudden, or how about Allegria? Where the Halloween houses are, all of a sudden you would see one of these lots with a lot of. Lot of units on it, and I think that that would. Not necessarily fit in exactly, that, that's, that's a, you, you are bringing up my concern of the stark transition between.
Right.
Actually, on Allegria is. There's that historic, uh. Building at the corner of Allegria and Mountain Trail. Um, that was all little. They're all connected little. Uh. Apartments. And then some, some infill got put in in the sixties, actually, on Allegria. But, uh.
Yeah, that's the Gil, Gil design project.
Yes, yeah. It's very nice.
But keep in mind that, that this concept wouldn't happen in the inter, in, in mid-street in Allegria, because that's all R one. Right, this is, these only happen on multifamily. And so. Um. I don't know, I, I guess the end of Allegria right at, at Baldwin is multifamily, but the, the mid-block is all single family, so this wouldn't go there. This is only going in multifamily.
So it'd be like on Lima, you know, the first block or two up from Sierra Madre Boulevard and stuff like that. Which is a kind of mixed houses and apartments and. You know. Duplexes and things like that.
Yep.
Anybody, uh, any other questions or? Discussion items that are discussion you guys want to bring up on this? Should we, uh? How do you want to try and resolve this, do, should we just vote and have someone bring up?
Well, I, I just wanna, I, I wanna make clear to Tom, I, I don't, I don't see that. Uh, getting rid of the minimum would allow more units. I, I, I think the number of units is set, so to me, I think this is just a size issue, it, it, it did allow more units, then I would agree. That we should have a minimum.
And, and what you're saying is we have one in other codes that apply and therefore that, you were saying this is redundant in some ways. Or trying to stop, limit, uh, limit us in this section when we don't necessarily need to.
Well, I, I'm saying that the, the, the number of units is limited otherwise, um. A- and so reducing the size of the units is not gonna allow for more units.
Okay. I tend to agree with that, I, I guess we're gonna go with smaller, you know, I've seen some pretty weird places. On some of the roads back off Las Rocas and things that. That I've been into, that they're renting out, I know they're part of another structure, but people live there, so. I mean, at least we have some control over it, to, at least that place being habitable, because. I would say some places that some of these people live, are living at might even question that they're habitable. Someone's living there, but I don't know if I would. Let my kid live there.
Uh, what, because of size or?
Yeah, I mean, at one place, the ceiling was so low, you remember those commercials where the person stands up and it's like a small room and they hit their head? It's like, I've seen stuff that's bizarrely cha- shaped like that, I mean, it's part of another, it's, it's a home that's been sort of. Roomed off for rentals, but it is pretty interesting. You're crawling from one thing to a next. It's probably appealed to a kid, but I wouldn't want to live there long term, and talk about a small space, I bet less than two hundred square feet.
But it allows like a student to live in town, and they went to their wife's, they'll do it.
It can be legally rented if it's under seven plus feet tall, because it doesn't count as a room.
Well.
Yeah, I think that's a code enforcement issue, I think, is what we're talking about there.
But if you're fine with living there, who's gonna call code enforcement, you know what I mean, it's like, if you, you don't want it exposed, then you, you're not gonna, anyway.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Hutt, I, 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 I understand what you're saying about limiting the size now, I guess. I'm trying to protect us from future changes to the law that may come down that continue to increase what can go on to a property. And so by insisting on minimums now, we're. We're just making sure that when they do come back and say, no, you can put ten units on here. That the base square footage that's already covered is, is a minimum. That, that's, that was the gist of it, but I, I will not, I will not oppose this.
All right.
Fair enough, I, I hear what you're saying, I think. State law's gonna bring us stuff, we don't have any clue, um, so.
Hard part, very good, all right. Uh, that's being the case, do I have a motion or?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty two dash oh two.
Do we have a second?
Can, can we add a clarification that?
Go ahead.
That we strike. The following provisions per the discussion.
Depends, Bob's making the motion, what do you think, what you're making?
No, then, then we approve as modified.
There you go, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Very good, have a second, uh, roll call vote, Jen.
Jen, I think you're on mute.
No, I don't think she is.
I think it's technical difficulties then. Maybe we could just go in order.
Everybody just raise your hands.
Can I, can I do the roll call, since I'm, since I know my speaker works? I'll, 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 I'll do the roll call, John? Commissioner, are you there?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm gonna call the roll since Jen's having trouble on this. Or should Vince, Mr. City Attorney, who should do the roll call, me?
I can be the roll call.
Okay, go ahead, Director Gonzalez, go ahead.
Chair Pexner.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dennison.
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Hut.
Yes.
And Spears.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. All right. So when that moves on, we'll move on to item number three, consideration of the planning commission resolution twenty two oh three. Uh. We're looking at the municipal code text amendment to adopt an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point three four of affordable housing. And we have another sort of brief update.
Yes, we have a brief presentation by our city attorney.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez, we sharing my screen again. So I, I won't go through the entire presentation, I'll just highlight the, the three main amendments that were presented. Uh, are presented by staff for the planning commission's recommendation at the last meeting. So amendment number seven is about combining bonuses, you'll find this one in section eleven of the ordinance. So previously, uh, we prohibited the combination of density bonuses from different categories. In other words, you couldn't combine, you couldn't say have a certain number of very affordable, a certain number of moderate and a certain number of lower income units in the same. Development and take advantage of, of, uh, density bonuses from those three different categories. You had to choose a specific category and you had to take advantage of bonuses within that specific category. Now with the amendment. Uh, we can, it allows for applicants to combine different density bonuses, incentives and concession awards. So they can choose, they can have a certain number from affordable, from very low income, a certain number from moderate and combine them into one development. Uh, the, the effect is that it incentivizes production of low income housing. Because it provides developer with more choices. Amendment number eight. Uh, removes a distinction between households, so under the existing code. Uh, we draw a distinction between for rent units, which are for very low or lower income. And for sale units. Which are moderate income households. This distinction that's drawn. Uh, actually comes from state law. So state law draws a distinction and says, we'll grant a density bonus for moderate income for sale units. And we'll grant a density bonus for. Very low and lower income rental units. But not for rental moderate income units, for example, and not for, for sale or lower income units. So we remove, we remove this distinction. In the code per the planning commission's direction. And the effect is it expands chapter seventeen point three four to developments. Proposing a required percentage of for sale units. For, for very low and lower households and for rent units for moderate income households. Uh, and those are. Right, those are the only two. Amendments proposed by staff. Now, we did receive an email, uh, from Commissioner Hut before this meeting, proposing additional changes to density bonus ordinance. Uh, under Commissioner Hut's proposal. He suggests adding a new definition. Called small housing development. Uh. Currently, we have the term housing development. Defined in our density bonus, uh, ordinance. And so Commissioner, and the, a housing development is five or more units. Commissioner Hut is proposing adding a new definition called small housing developments. Which contemplate the development of. Or developments of two to four units. And these smaller housing developments. Would be able to take advantage of the same. Uh, density bonuses, concessions, incentives. If they meet. The percentage threshold, so just a hypothetical here. If you have. If you have. Uh, for unit development. And one of those units. Is going to be. Uh, very low income. Well, in that case. Or sorry, it's going to be, uh. It's going to be lower income. In that case, you have twenty five percent of the units in that development, set for very low income. So the percentage of density bonus should be fifty percent. Uh, so, so before I move on to the next. Suggestion. I was, I was. Well, let me move on to the next, let me, let me complete the staff report and then we can. The, the, the commission can discuss it one by one. The other proposed change. Is. Uh. Commissioner Hut is proposing. A calculation. For combining. Uh, different income levels. And I wonder, I think this is gonna be a little bit hard to explain, I wonder if, uh, someone from staff can. Uh. Or maybe Commissioner Hut can share their screen. To have that moved in front of the commission.
Yeah, I mean, this, just to clarify, this is a, we, we, you talked about adding the combination. Um, and, and this is really, just goes into the math of how you would do that. Because. Uh, one of the issues is you have to have a minimum number of units. In order to qualify, and so you, you could potentially have a combination of that each one is under the limit. Right, so you wouldn't qualify under any table, and so it's really just a way to sort of shove them into one table, because if you look at. The, the, the way the things work, it's, um. Each very low. Income unit is worth about two and a half. Low income and five moderate, and so it's just basically doing math so you can. Apply this concept of the combinations that, that we have, that you've added in. Seventeen thirty four, one twenty C. So I, I suggested putting it up in a, a higher place, but I think it actually makes more sense here, uh, after your presentation. Um. And, and that we could. To, it's basically just saying how those combinations work, like if you had some moderates and some low. And some very low, you would add them up and that gives you the math on how you would get your, um, density bonus.
Perhaps during the discussion, we can. Uh, if you could share your screen to, to show that calculation or maybe someone from staff. That, that'd probably be helpful, but, but that concludes my presentation, thank you, Commissioner Hut, for your comments and. And for, for adding that explanation. Uh, if there were any questions, I'm happy to take questions on the changes, on the proposed changes.
Great. Any questions? Okay. I'll open up the public comment, anybody who's attending, uh, wish to speak? Anybody raising their hand?
Commissioner Pexner, at this time, we have four attendees and it does not appear that anyone is raising their hand.
Terrific, okay, well, just, we'll give them another minute, let's count down a, a minute and then, uh. Give them a chance to think about it or call in or whatever.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And, and while we're waiting, let me provide a practical application. Of, uh, what this small housing development. Um. How it might be applied in the city. So earlier, we were just talking about the R two zone. And how the R two zone. Uh, how in that zone you can also develop ADUs. So potentially in the R two. You can have. Two units. And two ADUs in the back. And so you have four units. Similarly, under SB nine. Uh, you can split a lot, do a duplex. You can have two units on each lot. So ordinarily, these types of developments would not be subject, would could not benefit from the density bonus law. Because whether it's four units on the lot, under AB eight oh three or the R two. Or it's two units on the lot under SB nine. Uh. You need a minimum of five units right now to benefit under the density bonus law. So Com- Commissioner Hut's. Proposal would ba- basically expand the availability of density bonus to encourage low income housing in the city. And it would now apply to SB nine type developments, AB eight oh three developments.
Thank you. Anybody, uh?
It does not appear that anyone has raised their hand to provide for the comment.
Great, thank you, all right, so we'll. Uh, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, you want to open up, someone gonna get their, uh, whiteboard out and do some math for us? Or anybody have any questions to John or something, they want to just open up, just talk further, go ahead.
So, go ahead Peggy.
Go ahead Peggy. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Okay. The small housing idea is really a good idea, given the small nature of our town, because it it really makes it work in a town the size of Sierra Madre, I think.
We have talked tonight a lot about, well, you're gonna have two houses and then they're gonna have two eighty, they're gonna be two ADUs and. So you're looking at, I mean. We hear, we've heard a lot about, you know, four. Four buildings on a, on a lot. Even if they built four buildings on a lot now, where there's no. There's no promise that they're going to address arena numbers and any need to be, you know, low or very low income, so. This is an opportunity for us to hopefully. Make a few of those numbers and not be too onerously overbuilt. Because you could only add one more unit, is that correct? Is that, is my math correct on that? So.
Add one more unit where, sorry, I didn't understand.
Say that again?
You said, you said you can only add one more unit?
So because the, the amendment allows you to, if you made all the four. Or or the two. ADUs, low income, you would get, you could, you could possibly get a bonus and add another unit?
Right, you, you could not, you could add more than one unit.
Yeah, you could add, depending on the amount of affordable units, you could get to fifty percent, so you would go from four to six.
There is one other thing to consider, if, if all the units. Are made to be affordable. Then I believe it's a hundred percent density bonus. So you could double your number.
Yeah, but. The affordable units lose money, so. The only way you're gonna do the hundred percent affordable is if it's like some subsidized thing. I, I think we could actually have a situation where somebody would build. Some affordable units like the ADUs and then get two more, I think, I think that's realistic. From a profit-seeking. Property owner. So, you know, the question to me, the way I look at this is. Do we want to try to get arena numbers, because I think. You know, for the most part, these affordable. Density bonus concepts are written in Sacramento for big cities and they don't really apply to us and. The likelihood we're gonna have very, any of these is pretty slim. And so if we actually applied it to the small housing developments, we might get a few. I, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get a whole bunch in any event. But we might get a couple of those developments and actually get a few more affordable units.
This is where not having a minimum. Unit size is really helpful also.
Yeah, you kind of buried the lead on this one, huh?
It wouldn't matter, if, if there were a four, if there were, if there were a minimum, it wouldn't matter if you're doing affordable, because it would. You would use your concession to get rid of it, so. I mean, that's one of the things we have to keep in mind about the affordable, is when you do the density bonus thing. You, in a large measure, gonna throw out a lot of the rules. It is, so, a- a- and if, if we think it's not worth. Trying to get those affordable units for that, then, then we shouldn't go for it, but. We should go into the size wide open about what it means.
So. Mr. City Attorney, help me understand, or Commissioner Hut. What lot would qualify to go from this? Four to even if it's fifty percent, six units? And any single lot that takes advantage of SB nine, is that what you're saying?
No, so if it's an SB nine lot. What would happen is they could develop a duplex on that lot. If the developing is duplex. Then. Because we have a, if we have a new definition called small housing developments. And small housing, housing developments are defined as two to four units. At SB nine development. Could now take advantage of. The density bonus law, so let's just assume for a second. That only one of those units is affordable. But one of those units is affordable, that's a, that's a fifty, that's fifty percent affordability at whatever level they provided. At whatever affordability level they provided. Fifty percent affordable would allow them three, would allow them additional unit, so now they could have three on a single lot. So. Imagine, imagine it like this. Single lot. Split into two separate lots. And they build duplexes up, so now you have four units. Each unit, each, each duplex. Has one of the units de-restricted on moderate. So they each get one additional unit, so now, single lot split into two, three units on each, six units out of the original, out of the original one. That's maybe one practical application of this.
And every single lot in town today qualifies for SB nine?
Every single lot today qualifies, every, in the R one, correct?
Which is eighty-five percent of what we have.
Yeah.
I am not for this one.
But I, I think in all reality, that, that, this is not a town that is going to. Attract low income, because it doesn't have any of the other, it, it doesn't have a shopping center nearby, it doesn't have. The other kinds of support mechanisms that, you know, people who would qualify for low income actually need. We're not, we're no longer on a bus, buses don't run through town, there's no shopping center, there's no big laundromat. You know, I think I'm with, with John on this, that unless it's some. Magnanimous philanthropist who decided that, well, I'm gonna put in, you know, low income housing. I don't think Sierra Madre is a natural location to do that. I mean, okay, you put it in there, then how these people can get around, I mean, how, first of all, how are they gonna get to Sierra Madre? And second of all, once they get here and they're living in, you know, that, the lot next door to you in the back. You know, how do they get in and out and do, and, and you know, do what they need to do? I mean, it's just too tough.
Then why are we proposing a law? That allows it?
Because the state said, told us to.
Well, no, the state, we already passed arena numbers for this cycle. Right? We've got five years to solve this problem. Seven years, eight years. So we've got eight years to figure out if this is the best way or not to do it, this is not something that we have to solve for today. If, if this is, if we, if we don't believe that anybody's gonna take advantage of it and we think that this is something that can help us for arena numbers. Then this is not something that has a lot of. Fire behind it today.
I think, I guess it depends what you mean by help us with arena numbers, if, if you mean. Help HCD approve our housing element, then we don't need to do this, because. That ship has sailed and I think we've already got at least preliminary approval. To me, this is a question of whether we would meet arena numbers by actually producing some affordable units. And I think if we did this, we would get a few, but. A handful at most, I, I, I don't think a lot of people use it, but I think it might, some people might. And so. You know, to me, that's, that's worth. The possibility that somebody might develop. On a lot with six units, but somebody might develop on a, a lot with four units right now, and I, I think that's probably more likely anyhow, because people are gonna. You know. You make a lot more money building bigger units. So, but I mean, we don't, we don't know how SB nine's gonna play out, so I, I also don't think that it's. You know, if we wanna sort of wait and see how this plays out, just sort of vanilla SB nine before we go down the shrug, that, that's fine, that's fine too, I just. I think we've, I, I've seen this affordable housing. Ordinance be updated, I think, three or four times now, because of different changes in state law. And I've seen no affordable units get built in town that weren't subsidized. So. Might be nice if we actually built for you. But I don't think, I, I realize that eighty-five percent of town is R one. But I don't think we're gonna see, you know, eighty-two percent converted to this, I think, because most of those lots have houses and it doesn't. It's, it's not economically feasible to demo a perfectly good house, it's gonna have to be a house that's really old, getting tired, it's time to go. And then the question is, what are you gonna do with it? I think if somebody's gonna do SB nine, they, they probably would go with four units in any event. But maybe they, if we had this, they would go with, with six units and make a couple of them affordable, so.
Six units. That sounds really scary, I have to admit. So I, my inclination would be. Given the discussion of how it might play out, to just wait. And see if we can get the arena numbers maybe someplace else, maybe with the. Religious housing overlay or something like that.
And, and, I guess Commissioner Hut, you know, I. I definitely understand that we have not seen the low-cost housing, I think that with SB nine being brand new. That maybe we give it a little time and, and learn from the first couple to see what. A nuanced approach to this is, and we could come back and say, you know what, Commissioner Hut was right two years ago, we should have done this from the beginning. Or we could see that laws change again and that. You know, we need to do it differently.
Well, I think state laws will certainly change again. I think we'll be visiting this stuff quite frequently, so I, you know. I, I totally understand the concept of, well, let's wait and see on SB nine, I, I'm fine with that, I. I'm ready to go now, I, I think, but if other people aren't, that, that's fine too. I, I think. With, with the other concept, I think about the comp, combining, we've already talked about that, and so my proposed change there is really just. Incorporating clear math to understand how the combination works, I'm happy to have somebody at staff share their screen, I have no idea how to do that, I've got it. This is, this is the low-tech way that's not gonna work, I'm sure. But basically, it just, you know, as I said, i- if you look at the amount of bonus you get for each. Unit. A low-income unit is worth, or I'm sorry, a very low-income unit is worth two and a half. Low-income units and five moderate, so I just put the math in that says, you know, that's how you do the conversion, and so. We could share that, that text if you want, or we could just.
I could share that text if you'd like. Are you able to see that?
Director Gonzalez, can you, if you zoom in on bullet point three?
Yeah, there's this bullet point there.
Yeah, let, let me put it, because I'm, I'm up on a second screen. So let me. Unshare my screen. And move it. Back down, I think that's the problem, because my screen's really large. Me. Bullet point three.
You could even delete the rest of the text and just. Focus on bullet point three and expand that out. Because that's what I, that's what's at issue right now.
One second. I'm gonna try putting it back up on full screen. Can you see that? Yes. If you double-click the top.
Yeah, I'm good.
Is that better? The same. What about if I move it down?
Instead, you have two options, you can either zoom in on the document or make the font really big. You're at font twelve, if you just bump that up to like eighteen, that should be fine, or you can also zoom. Into the document itself, there you go.
Good.
Okay, um, so can I explain, I, I, I thought about putting it in seventeen thirty-four oh four B, but. Based on Alex's presentation, I think it works better in this miscellaneous section, which is section eleven in our amendment. Seventeen thirty-four one two oh C, but the basic concept is. As I said, that you do equivalent very low-income units and you convert. Low-income units to equivalent very low incomes by dividing by two point five. And moderate by dividing by five, so this example here is if you have. Five percent very low, five percent low and six percent moderate income, that would work out to be effectively eight. Percent equivalent of very low income unit and get a density bonus of forty percent.
So Commissioner Hut, I actually have a question about this calculation. I, when, when I made the amendment. I initially thought what you, what you meant to, to do here is to have, to use the existing. Density bonus thresholds. So in other words. For very low income, five percent is the existing minimum. But for lower income. The existing minimum is, is ten percent. And for. Moderate income is also ten percent. So you're, you're proposing. You know, creating a, a new minimum threshold.
Well, I mean, the concept is you, you would have to have a minimum threshold, but the problem is. If you have a multitude of different types. That no one of them reaches the minimum. That, then, or conceivably, if all three didn't reach the minimum, you couldn't combine, so, for instance, in this example. The five percent very low meets the minimum. But there's one read that these moderates and lows are under the minimum if they were singly that type of income, and so you wouldn't count them. Right, because if you look at table. Two, for instance. Five percent very low doesn't get you anything, and if you look at table three, five percent mod doesn't get you anything. So you're not really adding, you, you would have to get the minimum of each table, which is a different beast, because those, those were set to be. Where you would want that level of affordability if it was all of that one type. And so that's why I think you need to be able to go to the equivalency table and, and say, okay. By a combination of the different ones, you can still get. Four units, because I, I think it's unlikely that you're gonna get a development that's gonna have. You know, fifty-plus percent. Affordable, it's just not market, it's just not gonna work, it's not gonna pencil, and so this is a situation where you could take. Some moderate and some low and add them to your very low to get up over that threshold and get a little bit more density bonus.
And, and you're contemplating, I'm assuming this calculation contemplates a relatively large development. Like something thirty units or more, because if you're talking about a ten-unit development. You're always going to hit the five percent or more threshold, you're gonna hit ten percent threshold with each individual unit. So I'm assuming this calculation here at the bottom contemplates a thirty-plus unit development in Sierra Madre?
Well, it would have to be a bigger one, that's true.
See, that, that's where I put my, up until today, when we were talking about this, I envisioned something that looked like an apartment house. That had a mixture of different affordable housing inside it and they could add, you know, additional units in this one giant building, but. Maybe because we've been talking about SB nine too much, now we suddenly thought about, oh, hold it, it could be a lot of single small units. I mean, distinct. Discrete buildings as opposed to units in a bigger building, so. You know. I, I, I think, for me, that's a. That's an important distinction.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just, my example that you have here could work with a twenty-unit building, if you had. One unit very low, one unit low and one unit mod, right, that would be three units. I, I, I guess it's conceivable you have sort of a twenty-unit bungalow court kind of thing, but I think that's pretty unlikely. I think this is mostly gonna be apartment buildings and flats. And because as, as this uh, city attorney said, i- i- you know, in order to get to that minimum size, you're gonna have to have. Some number of those that that um, are five percent. Because if you have a ten-unit, y- one unit is ten percent, right? So, but this would be helpful for any project that's bigger than ten units to combine. And I, you know, we might give, we might see some that are, you know, twelve to twenty units. A- and I think that the the ability to combine those would be helpful.
Well, I think, I, I think I, I'm tending to side more with Peggy and Tom on this, just because we're doing so much so fast. And I'd just as soon kick the can down the road and, I mean, Bob's, Bob's cheering for a magnanimous, you know, philanthrop-. Philanthropist and Elon Musk moved out of California, so good luck with that. And I think that maybe the, with people moving out of the state, maybe there'll be a change in the laws for the better. I mean, they've thrown so much just down, down our throats. Maybe we'll get it, you know, let the dust settle for a little bit. We haven't even come out of COVID and. I'm, I'm sort of, the conflict, we're, it's like, I appreciate all John's work, but it's like, we're trying to like, make uh, ca- ca- complex calculations to. To to accommodate state law that maybe, maybe it'll change. And we won't have to even deal with it for our community, cause I, I, I too have some misgivings about the unintended consequences of things. You know, you start doing something and someone cleverly comes up with something, you gotta, somebody with six units next door that. And then, then we got parking issues that we didn't contemplate, cause maybe they changed parking laws or something, but. No, a lot of people moving out of the state, maybe we won't have a housing crisis in a few years. I just think, I, I, I agree with Tom, I think this is a decision we don't have to make now, and I think I'd rather just wait till it's forced upon us. I'm not for, I'm, I'm not for, you know, I'm a for affordable housing, housing, but I think, I agree, everybody. It's like, we haven't really seen any of these projects and the reality of, is it may not occur, but I don't think we're helping anybody by trying to, you know. Jump through some hoops for something that's not gonna happen and potentially cause, you know, some, you know, six units on a lot that we don't want.
And and if I wasn't clear, I'm, the only part of what John was proposing that I wasn't for was where it created the new definition. Uh, below the five units, right? It's a five-unit minimum today?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm fine with everything that you proposed on the five-unit and above, it was the five-unit or the four-unit and below that I had concerns with.
I, I. I, I agree with that, and I, I understand the concept of waiting. Uh, the, the issue of combining, and I, I just wanna try to separate these for a second, so we don't mix them all together. Um, a- a- and I'm fine if, you know, group consensus on the lower is just, the, the smaller developments is just away. Um, but on the combining, these numbers, we've had these numbers for quite a few years, and this has been an issue. And so I think it would really be helpful if we could do the combining part now and make it clear that that's, that's feasible. And and again, on, a- a- as uh, the city attorney said, this really only would matter for units, for developments with more than ten units. Um, because, you know, math. But uh, so I, but I think if you had, you know, a twelve-unit development, a- and you wanted to have one very-low and one low. You know, that might be very helpful, a- and and it might make the difference between economic feasibility of two very-low income units. Cause there's a big difference um, in in the rents for those.
Yeah, I, I agree that, that if, if we, if somebody wants to come in and build an apartment building in town, that we should probably try to. In, provide some kind of encouragement for them to at least throw in one or two, oh, more affordable units. And I'm, I'm, I know they'll be smaller than the other ones, but, I mean, we know, as you're dividing up an apartment building, you can do that kind of thing. And it would make them, it would make it, it would be in some kind of incentive. Um, I don't see it as a, as a bunch of little houses on a, on a lot. I, I agree that causes a certain amount of, you know, consternation. Um, so if it's a, you know, if it's a, if it's an apartment building that has to be, is being built or or replacing an, an existing apartment building for whatever reason. And we can encourage, you know, one or two affordable units, I, it does us good. Do I think it's gonna happen? Not unless an, an existing unit falls down or something, cause, or we get that. I don't think Elon Musk is gonna ever do this, but if we get somebody who is, is uh, you know, so inclined to. Um, take a haircut on a development, yeah, then. It's a long shot.
I agree, uh, I'm for the combining, but not for doing the small housing, four units and under at this point.
So Mr. City Attorney, was that the way that it was proposed without Commissioner Hut's additions?
So, the way it was proposed last time is to allow for the, for applicants to combine. Uh, density bonuses from, from different uh, income categories. But the, but the way it was proposed in the past without Commissioner Hut's amendments is that. You all have access to that table, uh, with the different density bonuses. So applicants would have to meet those minimum thresholds. So for example, if, if someone was going to build twenty units. And uh, they put, they set aside one unit for lower income. Right? That's five percent of the development. They couldn't qualify for a density bonus by setting aside one unit in a twenty percent. In a, in a twenty-unit development, they couldn't do it, because the, the minimum threshold is ten percent. So they'd have to set aside at least two units in the twenty-unit development to qualify for the lower-income density bonus. What Commissioner Hut's proposing is creating some kind of equivalency table to allow. One unit of moderate, one unit of low, lower, one unit of very-low. So you can combine it that way. It, it, it incentivizes, uh, it basically lowers available thresholds and incentivizes uh, lower-income affordable development. I, I, I do have a, some suggested edits to the language, though, Commissioner Hut. Uh, if the commission is, approves of, of this, uh, of your suggestion, I, I would, I would like maybe read us the language a little bit and tweak it.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think the language is magic, it's, it's really the concepts that I was getting at, so if you wanna tweak it a little bit, that's fine. But I, I, I do think that's, you know, you think about a twelve-unit apartment complex that somebody's building. Um, if they put one very-low in, and then they wanted to add, you know, another unit, they, they couldn't add. A, a, a low-income unit, it wouldn't do them any good under, as we have it now. But I think they should be able to, that would, that would help a lot. Um, a- and that would potentially, uh, under what I was proposing, moving them from, you know, twenty-five percent bonus to a thirty-five percent bonus. So that, that's how it works, cause I think, y- you know, if you have a really big development of hundreds of units, this doesn't matter. Um, because you can do the grid pretty easily, it's when you get the, you know, sort of medium-sized. Um, things where you, you go in integers of one unit or zero. And and you just don't have the ability to fine-tune the numbers as well. And so we may have a twelve-unit development, it's, it's possible. I don't think we're gonna get, you know, two-hundred-and-forty-eight unit development, so.
Well, we haven't passed that soft-first-story, uh, you know, issue, so we, you know, in the next earthquake, we could have a lot of multi-family. Bil- multi-story buildings that are, need to be replaced, so, yeah.
Did you wanna go over the language now, uh, Mr. City Attorney? Did you have it, did you have it, did you have it worked out, or you wanna just?
Uh, yeah, I have, I have the specific suggestion, if we'd like to gather again.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Director Gonzalez, can you, can you share your screen if you don't mind? And and the edit was basically to both clarify and use existing definitions, so it currently reads. Housing developments with mixed incomes. Uh, I would propose we, that it be written as housing developments with a mix of affordable units. And then, which include at least a minimum number of affordable units. And after that line to write. See, that, that part was a little bit confusing to me, but I think we cleared up, cause I was going to suggest that we write. Uh, per income category. So, Director Gonzalez, if you could add. Uh, after, so if you could strike the language that says mixed incomes. And write in. A mix of affordable units. Maybe in red line. And then it says, which include at least a minimum number of affordable units. You could say maybe in different income categories.
Or you could say e- equivalent, I mean, cause the, the key is to, to qualify on table one. And then convert the tables two and three to table-one numbers.
Right.
So some combination has to give you the minimum, but you don't want each type to have to qualify under the minimum.
Right. How, how would you phrase, how, what's, how would you propose to phrase that then, Commissioner Hut?
You know, I, that language is not popping in my head right now. I, I, I'm fine to do this offline too, I, I think we all understand the concepts. Um. I- i- unless other people at the commission really, really wanna see this now, I, I think we understand the concept.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Yeah, if Alex wants to just have Commissioner Hut take a look at it, I think that is fantastic.
Thank you, or, or vice versa.
So, so given the. So. Close that, please, clo- just close the door, sorry, um. I forgot who made the motion, or was gonna make a motion, we can make it modified. With these changes. Is that you, Bob?
I think I made the last motion, um, um, um.
We got halfway.
Twenty-three oh-two, I didn't, I didn't do twenty-two oh-three.
Okay, who were, somebody, did we start with a, did we even get a motion to go? Or, or did we start?
That was why I was asking the details of what was in it versus what wasn't, but it sounds like.
Okay. You're gonna make the motion. Oh, okay, John, you can make the, you can make the motion.
Okay. I, I'll move adoption of resolution, uh. Twenty-two oh-three, um, recommending amendment to chapter seventeen thirty-four, affordable housing. With the amendments we discussed with regard to the combinations of income categories, but not with, with regard to the small, smaller units.
I'll second it.
Hey? Jen, you there?
Yeah. Chair Pexner?
Uh, aye, yes, yes.
Vice Chair Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hut?
Yes.
Commissioner Spears?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Terrific, all right, we'll get the language cleared up and move it forward, thank you very much. Now. Maybe that's a quarter of an hour, so we, you wanna, well, let's just keep moving, I guess, since we're all just at home. Um, we'll move on to the next item, item four, consideration of planning commission resolution twenty-two oh-one regarding adoption of ordinance to. amend the city's general plan, land use map, and zoning map, continue eight, this is a continuation from the last meeting. Um, we have an updated presentation.
Yes, we have a presentation from Joshua Wolf, Associate Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners. Give me a moment to share my screen here. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, um, today, I would like to introduce amendments to the general plan, land use, and zoning maps. This is general plan amendment twenty-two oh-one and zone change twenty-two oh-one. Um, the application is to amend the general plan and uh, general plan land use map and the zoning map. Um, in response to the general plan amendments that were made last year. Uh, that were consistency updates for its, uh, in, in terms of its general plan from twenty-fifteen. Um, and this is necessary as desired by city council as a response to the community concerns at the time that they approved it, uh, back in September. So in summary, what happened, um, with the last general plan amendment in twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-one is a hundred-and-sixty-eight parcels among. Many more, approximately five-hundred were, uh, did realize a, a downzoning and reduction in uh, land use intensity. Um, and, and these were summarized as either being moved from R three to R two, R three to R one, or R two to R one. And so the solution to that, uh, to address the concerns of the community and the city council would be just to reverse everything that happened. And bring it back to its uh, original designation in land use and zoning. Uh, so conveniently, or coincidentally, um, only two days after city council approved the resolution to uh, make consistency with our general plan and land use map and zoning map. Um, twenty-twenty-one housing package includes SB ten, uh, it was passed only two days after, on September sixteenth. And it was made effective on January first, twenty-twenty-two. And SB ten of this package, it creates a simplified process whereby a city, uh, can, by ordinance, zone a parcel for up to ten units of residential density. Um, such an ordinance is not subject to sequo. And to make, to do so, you would need to uh, meet three criteria, three major criteria. The first criteria being that the parcel must be within an urbanized area. The second, that the parcel is either an urban, urban infill site or located in a transit-rich area. And for contact, ser moderate is not in a transit-rich area, but uh, may qualify as an urban infill site. Um, the third criteria here is that the current land use and zoning of the parcels allows for residential uses. And as you saw in my previous slides, everything affected was residential uses. Um, so more about an urbanized area, or urbanized cluster map, the US Census Bureau, according to his twenty-ten census. Does include ser moderate in the urbanized cluster area, and you can see by this uh, bold green line that, uh, that is the area. Designating the urban cluster, and ser moderate is right here at its border, within the cluster. A second of the criteria was to identify whether the sites were urban infill sites, and to meet that criteria, there is a subset of three criteria. Um, which kind of overlaps with um, some of the other stuff here, so. Uh, the first of that is that it is a legal parcel located in a city that is included in, in urban cluster. Um, we basically saw that, I, I think, I don't really know what the case is here, this maybe if that. Uh, urban cluster borderline kind of splits the city. Um, in any case, all of ser moderate is in a urban cluster. Uh, the second of that is that at least seventy-five percent of its perimeter of the site adjoins parcels developed with urban uses. And the third of that is uh, that the parcel is zoned for residential use or residential mixed-use development. And a- again, that's overlap, uh, we saw by my previous slide that all of these affected parcels are residential in use. Um, so we kinda have to deep dive into the second of these criteria, uh, to ensure that. Uh, to ensure that each of the sites is in urban use or or joins urban uses, for at least seventy-five percent of each of these sites. All one hundred sixty-eight sites of perimeters. Um, so the first question here is to ask ourselves, what is an urban use? An urban use is any current or former residential, commercial, public institutional transit or transportation facility. Or retail use or any combination of those uses. And and kind of the intent to what defines an urban use is basically that um, it it it's. An agricultural or a natural open space. So the intent of this whole thing is to preserve agricultural and open space uses. Um, and I did conduct a site study and analysis. Uh, that's in the staff report packet. Under attachment C that does uh, analyze each of the hundred and sixty-eight parcels. And does find that all are urban in infill sites because they all join are joined by urban uses. Um, so this is just again, their criteria that all one hundred sixty-eight parcels are currently zoned for. And have land use designations along for residential uses. Um, so just jumping back down to our general plan amendment, we do need to make findings. And uh, the the planning commission here would make finding that uh, the increased density authorized by the ordinance is consistent with the city's obligation to. Affirmatively affirmatively further uh, fair housing pursuant to section eighty-nine nine point five. Um, and that restoring the land use and zoning of a subject parcels increases its opportunity to develop more affordable housing. Under chapter seventeen point thirty-four of the Sierra Madre municipal code and increases the opportunity to develop more trans transitional housing under ordinance number fourteen forty-one. Which added transitional and supportive housing is permitted use for R one, R two and R three zones. And to make finding for a general plan amendment, the planning commission would recommend to the city council approval of a general plan amendment. And zone change wherein the public interest convenience and necessity so require. In that the amendments are in response to the concerns of the community. Expressed by our last general plan amendment as a result of its uh, twenty fifteen uh, general plan update. Uh, these amendments are of the interest of the immediate community by affording the opportunity to develop more housing. And to the regional community through providing opportunities in addition to the state's housing element to fulfill its arena obligations. Tonight, the planning commission may approve resolution twenty-two oh one. Recommending approval of an ordinance amending the general plan, land use and zoning maps. They may approve the resolution with modifications. Continue consideration of the resolution or deny the resolution setting findings that the planning commission feels cannot be made. And staff is recommending approval as proposed. That does conclude my presentation, and I want to share that I also have. Uh, maps, the cluster map here, if you wanted more detail about that. I have a land east map and I can move back and forth between what would be changing for each parcel if you want to deep dive on that. Um, I also have a zoning map if people are interested in that. And that would conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Questions?
I want to applaud staff on the graphics. They were very, very helpful. Good job.
And I would love to get a copy of those graphics, if you wouldn't mind emailing those to us so that when we have these remote meetings or we look at our packets, we we have copies.
Are you are you talking about the graphics in the staff report?
Uh, the zoning, the zoning map.
Oh, okay, these ones. So um, this function a little weird. Uh, I I have layers. So what happens is. Um, some of these layers, you have to figure out which one they are. It's gonna be the one called zone amend B two. And if I can demonstrate here, it would look like this. So just zoom in here. Turn off the layer and you can see what it was before and what it would be proposed.
I don't have any questions for staff. Peggy, John?
Okay.
Okay, the big picture here is that. At some point in the past, a year or two ago, properties got downzoned, but now we're upzoning them again.
That would be correct.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, go ahead. John, well, I have one question. There's no, is there any change to any of the overlays?
There is no change to the overlays, and um, I do recognize that some of the attachments in the staff report um, kind of. Had an error in printing, I think, where the the overlay may be. Misprinted, but it's not affecting any of the overlays.
Great. That's all. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll open it up for. Public comment, and we'll do as before. Ask anybody who's already tending to, they get the, they get first come, first served, and then we'll let anybody else. Calling in come in. And if there's nobody waiting, we'll give them a minute to call in. How are we situated?
Commissioner Pepsner, we do have uh, someone wishing to make public comment. I will patch them through now.
Thank you. Hello?
Speaker, I believe you might be muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
Oh, thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kathy Watson. I live at one fifty South Baldwin Avenue. Um, I and I also would like to thank the planning department for uh, their due diligence and. Expediting the documentation necessary um, in orders to restore the zoning on the hundred sixty-eight properties. Um, of which my husband and I are one of those people. Um, and uh, that the city council unfortunately felt compelled to downzone uh, late last year. Um, I I as uh, uh, Mr. Wolf was doing his presentation. Uh, one thing I think is very important is that in the two thousand fifteen uh, general plan. The the uh, down zoning was really with the intent of having no growth in the city. Rather than slow growth, which the state of California, uh, the law does not permit. So I think that's important to to uh, state. And uh, uh, restoring our zoning is the right thing to do, and we encourage the commission to approve this resolution recommending. Approval of an ordinance to the city council that will restore uh, our zoning and particularly our R three zoning. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pepsner, it appears we have one more uh, person wishing to make public comment. Please stand by.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi, um, yes, my name is Eric Lynn. I'm property owner at a one eight two South Baldwin. Uh, similar to. My property was one of the uh, properties downzoned, and I had just purchased a property. Sorry about that. My property was, uh, I had just purchased a property uh, early last year. When the property was in that strange limbo period between when. The zoning map showed one thing and the general map showed a different thing. So it was quite a surprise to find out that uh, my property was uh, caught up in this and it was a pro and I did purchase with the intent to develop. So I do thank the uh, planning team on. Uh, addressing this so quickly and being able to bring this up to the planning commission so quickly. And I do uh, urge the planning commission that uh, or appreciate the planning commission on taking this into consideration and hopefully you uh, approve. Um, this resolution to restore the zoning on all these properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Pepsner, I believe that was it for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll bring it back to the commission. Anybody have any additional comments, questions, further discussion? Make a motion.
I move that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero one recommending adoption of an ordinance to amend the city's general plan, land use map and zoning map.
I second that. And and I also want to second Bob's prior comment about the staff report, which I thought was very well-written and and very helpful. On explaining a very complicated situation.
Yes.
We have a second. So roll call vote.
Chair Pepsner.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Dennison.
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hut.
Yes.
Commissioner Spears.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks again, Josh. So we'll move on to the last, well, we actually just, our last item is a discussion item. Uh. Consideration of planning commission resolution twenty-two oh seven adopting an ex parte communication and site visit disclosure policy.
We do have a presentation by our city attorney.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Uh, he, I'll note that the city council has already considered this resolution and adopted it. Uh, but I asked Director Gonzalez to agendize it for the planning commission as well because, one, I feel like it's more relevant to the planning commission. Because they consider more of these types of projects. And two, it's to make sure that we have a clear understanding and at least a written policy now. As to what these types of disclosures are and uh, when they're appropriate to make. So as as you're probably all aware, before the the planning commission decides quasi adjudicatory decisions. Meaning when they decide some kind of entitlement usually. They have to have a, there's a site disclosure and a um, ex parte disclosure requirement right at the top of that agenda item. We'll ha, we'll continue to do that. So the commission doesn't have to figure out. Uh, which item requires disclosure, which doesn't. But I I wanted to clarify, when there is a disclosure, what needs to be disclosed and what's the purpose? The purpose is to make sure that when the commissioners make a decision. That they make a decision based on evidence that's been entered into the record. So if you go to a site and you observe something, and your observation isn't reflected in the staff report. It's important that you articulate what that observation was that wasn't included in the staff report. Similarly, if you talk to a member of the public, or you talk to the applicant. And you learn something about that site, about that entitlement that wasn't included in the staff report. It's important to disclose that, that ex parte communication. So that uh, that is reflected in the staff report. So when the ultimate decision is made. If your decision at all was based on what you observed or what you learned. That uh, we can, at the city attorney's office can defend that decision. Because it's not arbitrary. Meaning there is a basis for it, and that basis is reflected in the record. Um, so I think going forward, I I would ask, I know that all the commissioners do a pretty good job of of. Uh, disclosing when they've had a site visit and if they've spoken to anyone. But I think maybe the additional step we should take. Is in addition to saying that I visited the site and I spoke with the applicant. That maybe say something in it like, all the information I observed, all the information I learned from the ex parte communication. And everything I observed at the site is reflected in the staff report. Or is reflected in the public record already. Something like that. So to clarify that there's, there's no additional information that you have that no one else has. That would serve as a basis of decision. And that concludes my report. Question? Yes, Commissioner.
If we do have. Additional information, we should, that is the time to bring it forward.
Correct, correct. And it and it doesn't have to be like. It's information that you feel is credible and something you are gonna rely on. Because you're, you'll, you will receive lots of emails where people are speculating. Or they're, or they're saying something and you think that's not credible or not reasonable. No need to disclose that. And place that into the record. Place information into the record that uh, you feel is reliable and can serve as a basis of decision.
A follow-up question. So we do this at the beginning of a project being introduced. In the discussion period, if I remember something that I forgot to say was additional information. Do I have to identify it as identif additional information?
Yes.
That helpful?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, because usually what happens is, I mean, I know from my experience, I go out and visit the site, I talk with the applicant, I walk around, I sometimes talk with the neighbors. And. You know, then I might read the staff report, but then in the discussion about what's happening and then what a lot, it seems to the, in my memory, what a lot of times happens is. The applicant will state something and you'll say, well, hold it. I didn't see that at your house, or I didn't see that on the, when I visited the property. Now, I I mean, I. I don't know what they're gonna say, so I can't bring that up before the discussion, but I, but I can. But say stating that during the discussion, is is that enough?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that goes to what Commissioner Dallas was saying too. Yes, ideally, we state it upfront. But to the extent, or in a situation where we remember it during discussion or after the applicant has spoken. I think it's fine to state it later. Uh, it's just, I think it's just important to say that this information was learned through an ex parte communication or a site visit.
So so should that be, should we somehow highlight it so it gets put into the minutes? As being ex parte instead of just, there was discussion? Because usually, you know, we, the the minutes reflect, we discussed it, but but the things that we. Highlight as being ex parte are not usually set aside.
I I think you don't need to. Uh, it's not important that it gets into the minutes because we have recorded meetings. And anytime there's litigation over one of these things, the entire recorded meeting is transcribed.
Okay.
So the 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 minutes are really there just to reflect decisions. It's really, minutes are really about the vote and who voted and uh, or against. Uh, we don't really rely on the minutes or purposes of of litigation.
Okay, so but when we see something that that contradicts what whatever. Is there, we 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 need to, we need to highlight that when we, when we present it.
Yeah, it's it's just important to state how you learned it if it's not in the staff report, and if you learned it through an ex parte communication or a site visit. It's helpful to to explain that.
Okay.
But just to be clear, we only have to disclose things. That we rely on that aren't otherwise in the public record, right? So if if there's a. Huge tremendous oak tree that, you know, we don't want chopped down. And three people come and testify, there's a great oak tree, don't chop it down, and it says in the arborist report, there's a great oak tree. You know, I, we don't have to go into detail that I went to that site and saw that oak tree, right?
Correct, correct. And it's the same, same thing with uh, if you receive emails. Those emails we place into the record. If if in the emails they discuss something that you've observed. That's that's part of the record too, so you don't need to disclose that.
Okay, so it's really, we need to dis disclose who we talk to and what it is if it's different than the public record because. You know, uh, uh, on the meadows. I mean, we've heard a lot of this stuff many, many times, but I've probably talked to hundreds of people. Ex parte, I mean, you walk around town and people come and talk to you about it, right? But almost everything they're saying is stuff that they said again in public hearings, and it's, it's in the E I R comments. So I just, I don't want to have to make a big list.
Yeah, and and for the meadows specifically, all those decisions. At least in the phase one portion of it are all legislative decisions. So there are no site disclosure requirements or ex parte disclosure requirements in the first phase. When you get to the designer view, if we get to designer view and the tentative track map, then there will be.
So. In this litigious society that we live in, where you have us make an affirmative declaration. And something slipped our mind, doesn't that shift the liability onto us? And something slipped our mind, doesn't that shift the liability onto us, us volunteers?
No, you have no liability, the city will indemnify all of you. Careful, Commissioner, Commissioner Dallas. Any, any further questions? I don't see any. Chair Pepsner, back to you.
Very good, okay, it's not an action item, so thank you very much. I guess, I hope we all feel, we know what we're informed about.
Oh, it is an action, did you say it's not an action item, it is, it is an action item.
Oh, it is?
There's a resolution to approve.
There is, okay.
And this, and this resolution will be included in all future planning commissioner packets.
Okay, so let me see, where is it, I'm scrolling down here.
That, that would be very helpful if it's, if it's, if it's part of the checklist at the beginning of, in every packet. And you know what might also be helpful is if, if we, if we vote something down that we also have to list. Where we thought it did not comply.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you mean the agenda packet? Because I was talking about that planning commissioner packet that planning commissioners receive when they start the.
No, I'm talking about the agenda packet, so whoever's running the meeting doesn't miss it.
It's already an item in every meeting we have, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking for the. Let me say, well, I'll just do it this way, okay.
It's resolution twenty two oh seven.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, I do.
I, I move we adopt resolution twenty two oh seven.
Second.
Second? Roll call vote? Jen?
Chair Pepsner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dennison?
Aye.
Commissioner Dallas? Commissioner Hut?
Yes.
Commissioner Spears?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, all right, moving on, any reports from the planning commissioners? Anything important coming up?
Yeah, I think we're getting a new clock in Kyrsten Corrigan Saturday afternoon.
All right. Ring the bell at high noon. Need any help on the trail, Bob?
No, we're good, we're working hard on the trail.
Okay. I always like to put it, I put a shout out for things I don't do. Anybody else? Okay, planning and community preservation departments, Director Gonzalez?
Yes, I would like to inform you that our meeting of March seventeenth will be conducted at. Live and held at the city council chambers. And on that agenda, we will introduce a discussion item to discuss our amended. Accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Great, thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Director Gonzalez, did, and maybe this covered it last meeting, forgive me, I, I wasn't there. Did we receive any guidance from city council on the changing of times in the meeting?
They are retaining, we forward that information to the city council. And our time will remain as is.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, just a general reminder, we had the meeting with the city, there's also on the website regarding the Meadows project. If anybody's interested at thecityofserromadre dot com slash Meadows. I think that covers it, so I will adjourn, if anything else, I will adjourn the meeting to March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty two in person.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, good night.
Night.